This is the October 15th Clinton School Committee meeting. I'd like to start by entertaining a motion to accept the bills.
I'll make a motion to accept the bills.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, a motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on September 24th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 24th, please.
Thank you, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion being made and seconded, any discussion on the minutes from September 24th? There being none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Think it's unanimous, okay. Charles, our student rep is here.
We go too.
You will need a microphone.
Charles, do you want to take the mic?
Good evening. The PSITs were held this past Wednesday at CHS. Eighty freshmen and a total of 125 sophomores and juniors took the test. The CHS Student Council held its October blood drive this past Friday and was largely successful, collecting 60 units of blood from students, staff, community members, which brings the school's total for the year to 103 units. We expect another great turnout for our Christmas blood drive on December 14th. Tonight, the JV and Varsity Girls Field Hockey Team will be playing against Maynard at 5:30 and 7:00 PM respectively. Dubbed "Orange Night" or "Kisses for Kylie," the Lady Gales are proud to honor four-year-old Kaylee Gilroy, who was diagnosed with leukemia at 16 months old. Kaylee finished her last round of treatment this past April, now attending Clinton Elementary School, and tonight is dedicated to all who fight the battle that Kaylee did. Mrs. Kaiser and all field hockey players will be collecting donations through next Friday. Driver's Ed began today at CHS and will continue after school for the next three weeks. This Wednesday, Kim Carrigan will be hosting a college essay-writing presentation at CHS in the library at 7:00 PM. We are upon homecoming weekend on Friday. CHS football players, cheerleaders, and band members will attend CES during lunches to mingle and entertain the elementary school students. At 1:30 on Friday, CHS will be hosting its All-Sports Rally in the gym. On Saturday, the homecoming game will be played against St. Peters, followed by the homecoming dance that night. CHS cheerleaders placed fifth in the Milford Invitational this past weekend. They will compete at Shepherd Hill next Saturday and at Drakehead High the following weekend. ACTs will be held here at CHS on October 22nd, and the Excel Club will be hosting its first meeting after school on October 22nd to usher in the new year of volunteering and our new high school advisors, Mrs. Boderthe and Mrs. Reinderson. The CHS First Robotics Team will begin student enrollment soon and is excited to move to the high school for building while still supported by Nipro and its facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the PTA tonight?
Good evening. This Saturday, October 20th, we will be holding our Fifth Annual Ghost and Goblin Fund Run 5K, taking place at Central Park. We are excited for our event. Regretfully, Dr. Meyer is unable to attend, but we have Mr. Rulo, Beth McNally, and Anne-Marie Sargent, and Maggie the Therapy Dog coming to help kick off our event. CPAC and boosters will be supplying food, and Parks and Rec will be having activities in the park, and our own Joel Bates will be DJing the event. We are most appreciative of all the support via participants, volunteers, donations, and sponsors. We hope to raise the most we can to support our schools. We would also like to extend an invitation to all of you, school committee members, to come. The Clinton PTA will be also doing another fundraiser, a school play called Elf Jr., which Christine Zenkraft is directing, children from 4th grade through 12th. And it will be held here at CES the weekend of November 30th and December 1st, so we're looking forward to that. And some other things that we are going to do is, we will be hosting a snowball dance at the elementary school on Friday, December 7th, and it's still in the planning stages and more information to come. And due to the impending race this week and other town events, we need to move our meeting to next Wednesday, October 24th, in the CES library at 6:30 PM. So that's it for PTA.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. I do have CPAC, sorry. So we will be having a hot dog table this Saturday at the Ghost and Goblins Road Race. Everything except the drinks has been donated to the CPAC, which is our first time getting donations like this, so we're pretty excited. And we will also be participating in the Harvest Festival and Jaconi Family Fitness Fall Festival, where we will be selling Clinton Mask t-shirts, autism awareness pins, holiday ornaments, and a couple holiday decorations. And we are in the process of planning a Make-A-Sign night with Tinker Cart for the holidays, with more information to come. All our proceeds will be going towards a speaker for this coming year. And at our last meeting, we had a couple non-English-speaking families come to our meeting, and we, unfortunately, we weren't able to help them out in the meeting. I did direct them to the appropriate people, so, but I reached out to Adult Ed and I asked them if they had anyone that would be willing to come and translate for us on the cheap, like, and free. And we had someone step up for that. So we are gonna, we're gonna have a translator for the next few meetings to see how it is, and for our Connected, we want to include that we'll have a translator there, and we don't want to-
And we'll get that Connected translated in Spanish or whatever, yeah?
Yeah, and so we're hoping that, we don't want to lose out on some parents that are looking for information and/or support, so we're hoping that, you know, this might be another bridge that we can help facilitate for our schools. And so our next meeting for CPAC will be Tuesday, November 6th, which is also election night, at the CES library at 6:30 PM. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anything from the CTA tonight?
Nothing to see.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment? You're being known? Dr. Meyer?
All right, thank you. So the first thing I put in your packet here is a, it's the Accountability Report. There's the one for the district. I just gave you kind of a snapshot of the first page, doesn't have all the subgroup information, it's kind of the overview. So you gave you the district, and then there's the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. This is a very different Accountability Report than we've seen in the past, and actually, at our next meeting, at the Tri-Council meeting, we will go over the details of sort of what this means and how they, how they come up with those things. But you can see kind of on the side here, they're looking at a handful of indicators, the achievement, growth, high school completion data, progress towards attaining English language proficiency, and some additional indicators such as chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. Then what they do is they set targets for you, and based on those targets, you can get points for either improving, meeting your target, no change, or declining. So declining is zero, no change is one. I think meaning, improving is two, was it, meeting is three, and exceeds is four, something like that. So, so those are your four points, and then they, they kind of use that to come up with a sort of weighted system here, so you can figure out the percentage, your percentage of, of meeting targets. So really, groups, you know, you were kind of, most districts and schools were put in one of kind of two buckets this year. You were either meeting targets or partially meeting targets. We were partially meeting targets, which most of the state was. There are still some, some schools that for certain reasons required assistance, they were in that, kind of that bottom area, if you look at sort of the continuum of categories. So if you look for the district, we're at 45, 47% of partially meeting targets. So it should be noted that basically anything over 50 would mean you're improving. I know it's a low number, but basically the way the scale works, anything over 50 means you're improving. Anything between 25 and 50 kind of means basically you're in that no-change type category. Anything below 25 would mean you were kind of in there, according to those indicators, kind of fought, did, did worse than you did the year before. So most of our schools, you know, we're at 47 as a district, 43 for the high school, 49 for the middle school, and 65 for the elementary school. So that kind of, you know, we were right, right on that cusp of almost in that improving category, and we'll figure that out. The, it should be noted that the elementary school, there is sort of limited data because without, when they only had the 3rd grade, they, they had no growth score. So that's why they also achieve no, they have no accountability percentile because they don't have that, that target. So, I don't want to, I don't want to go into these too, too much, because like I said, I do plan on a rather lengthy presentation that'll dig into this deeper at the Tri-Council meeting, but since they were released, I didn't know if people were getting any questions about it, I wanted to get them in your hands and, and, you know, answer any quick questions you had on any of the verbiage. I think I sent all of you the press release kind of too on the PowerPoint. And you can, they're all available now public on the, you know, if you go to the DSC website, you can click and look at different subgroups, or you could look at the data behind these as far as individual, you know, grade level, subject tests, and see how we did, so.
So pending the superintendent's detailed report, are there any initial questions?
Okay. All right. So we'll revisit that next meeting, and if you come up with anything specific, you know, between now and next meeting, feel free to, you know, either shoot it to me beforehand so I can make sure we address it in the presentation, or, you know, just make a note of it, and if we don't cover it in the presentation, then you can ask. It is a new system, and I think that there are some things that, there's still, there's still finessing, I'd say, about it. The next idea was to, the next agenda item was to go over some of the strategic plan areas, as we've been trying to keep that as a focus, and just kind of give sort of a general update on what we've been doing. So human resources, if you look at the first strategic goal is to work with the town to explore a human resource manager position that will service all town employees. So I actually got some news hot off the press. I know that the Personnel Board met today. They have kind of a working job description that they're in the process of sending to the Government Affairs Committee, and I think they're meeting not, is it next week?
The last week, yeah.
Last week in October. And I talked to Mike Ward, I will be invited to that committee so we can discuss it with the Government Affairs Committee, and then from then, I think we would have an opportunity to bring it back to our boards and, and hopefully get it approved that first week of like November, somewhere along there. So it might be something that I can probably try to get you a more detailed update, hopefully maybe a draft of the job description for the October 29th meeting, because I think the plan is to hopefully get the Personnel Board to approve it in early November so it can get posted.
Exciting news.
Great.
So they're looking at a full-time, not a collateral job, right? It's not going to be somebody's additional job.
This was budgeted as a full-time job, but it was, it was budgeted for half a year as a full-time job with the intent that, with the idea that it's going to take us a while to bring the person online, yep.
Good.
So I think there's still just a little bit, you know, the next, I know that they've been doing their due diligence of getting some, you know, sample job descriptions from other towns and looking at what we need, and I think it'll just be, you know, I think when it comes to us, it'll just be looking at sort of fine-tuning some specific things at the schools that are, that right now we handle in our office, and figuring out which ones of those are actually going to be duties that are, you know, sent up to that office and we can kind of streamline as possible. I mean, I think everyone's, I think we're all on board that it's, you know, there's a lot of labor laws now, there's a lot of, you know, leaves and different things like that, and those laws are always changing, and the more we can streamline and be efficient in being compliant with all those things, we'd like to. The human resource policies, you know, that'll be something that's ongoing, but I think some of that'll be, you know, that's something that I think once we have a new human resource manager, now we'd have more of an expert in-house, because I think that that's something that, you know, we're going to want to, you know, we're not going to want to spend our, you know, spin our wheels creating policies to have someone walk in and who's an expert and, and tell us they're all wrong, so. Hiring, termination, end-of-year procedures, we did create some new hiring procedures this year, we went over, just revamped kind of our hiring form. We are working on our, our termination form and our end-of-year procedures, just to kind of back those up, but we'll, so we anticipate having those completed as the year goes on when we'll need them for the end of the year. Handbooks is always an ongoing thing that we'll be revising, same idea, the idea is to try to make sure that we have more of a clear faculty handbook that is more uniform, and I think now that we have some of the contract language changes in there, we'll be able to work on doing something a little more universal so that there's some, so those pieces that should be common across the district are common across the district, and making sure that it's kind of more universal for all employees as well, so that there's some certain, certain things in there. Job descriptions, we're in the process of requesting some job descriptions from some other districts. I did reach out to one of our larger districts in the area that has, you know, it's a large district that has basically like a human resource department, and we're getting some, a lot of their sample job descriptions, so we have more of a starting point, so we can try to update those. I think at some point we'll have to, I'll probably, one of the next steps in that is once I kind of see some of theirs and how theirs are broken down, we'll probably try to bring back to this committee to kind of narrow down what we, you know, how fine-tuned we want to get with job descriptions, you know, and in large school districts, they might have a separate job description for a physics teacher versus a chemistry teacher. In smaller school districts, it might just say more generically, kind of like a high school content-based teacher and be a little more generically written, so we can, you know, we can look at certain things like that. The training protocol, we did, you know, we did a lot of the training, we did the mandatory trainings this year. You know, we do rely on a lot of internet-based for that, but I think what we're going to try to do is make even more of that, so it's a little more comprehensive online, so just so we can maximize that time in the beginning of the year, but still, still do the due diligence for those trainings. And, you know, evaluations, we're staying on top of that. I do think that we need to, we are continuing to look at the evaluation instruments for instructional assistance and then other employees like administrative assistants, those types of areas. And then PD plan, I think we've been, you know, we've been trying to create those, you know, that we've, you know, it's a little difficult for some of them because I know we have limited PD opportunities for our non-teaching staff, but I think we're, we're staying on top of that. So I think, and we're moving in the right direction on the human resource school, I think the biggest one is the, the very first one there about getting that human resource position, which the, the wheels are, the wheels are turning on that, so that's good. You know, funding and finance was the next one, we're going to do a little, little update on. You know, focusing on multi-year budgeting, I think, you know, that's, that's one we'll be able to do, we will do that this year as we go through the, the process, and I think we even started that last year, it was really our philosophy when you look at things like school choice, you know, making sure that you're, you're budgeting, to, looking at your budget two and three years out and trying to make sure that you're not just, you know, you know, adding a bunch of stuff in one year that you're going to have to cut the next year. You know, communication transparency and budgeting, I think we'll, you know, we'll continue to try to do as much of that as we can. The efficiencies and aligning with the town and minimizing resources, so that's the town-wide financial software package. Last time I spoke to Mike Ward, which was probably last week, I know we were trying to get a meeting together, he's got a final quote, I guess based on, from Munis, that was tailored to the, the specific packages that we identified our last meeting with Munis. So it looks like we're, he's trying to get that committee together one more time so we can hopefully pull the trigger and get forward with that, which hopefully if we can get that done, you know, in, in, before, you know, before the holidays really, we'd be able to get some sort of portions of those systems maybe online by the beginning of next fiscal year. I'm sure the whole thing won't be up and running, but start getting some things, some things in the works there. And I think that's really a key one in the, in terms of, you know, just efficiency. I mean, I think, again, you know, even, even in-house, there's a lot of things that we do that I know could be more efficient, but it's difficult to start trying to, you know, move in one direction and try to streamline a process when we know we've got a, a very robust package coming in the near future. So hopefully, once we get that timeline, that'll allow us to really work on maximizing that efficiency.
Is that, I know we've discussed this for years, and I'm hoping that's what it's leading to, is like a town line centralized purchasing.
Yeah, so, so Munis is like a comprehensive program that you'd be able to do, you know, we should be able to do budgeting with it, purchasing as far as different people would be able to initiate requisition forms, those would electronically go to the proper kind of management who could then kind of electronically sign off on them, to generate POs. It should be, we should be able to do budgeting with it, where we can store our, our personnel information, so we have that, and then, you know, so at any given point, we want to know, you know, exactly how much from one, you know, this line item, who's it been spent on, I should be able to kind of double-click and see what's in there and do all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of really streamlining stuff, and then they, Munis is really the biggest one when it comes to municipality, they're, they're the ones that pretty much everyone uses, because they also have add-on packages for almost everything in terms of, the town hall might do, you know, little point-of-sale things for the collector's office and that kind of stuff. So they have, so that's been a lot of what we've been doing, is looking at those different packages and saying, you know, for Clinton, for where we are, for what we want to do, what do we need to get, what packages do we want right now? And then there's always opportunity to add on or, or get rid of some in the future, but, you know, we tried to streamline that. You know, exploring opportunities for collaboration with other districts, organize to improve efficiencies or creation of new programs and economy of scale. If you look at some of the action steps, it's ways to collaborate with other districts in either sped transportation, alternative ed programs, professional development. So I know, you know, one thing Karen has been doing, her analysis on the van, which I think we put in here-
Yep.
Yep. Showing that, you know, basically, you know, for FY19, we had projected with the runs that the, that we're doing, we would save approximately $25,000 for the, for the year for that one van. You know, last year we saved a little bit, the reason it says a loss obviously because the purchase of the vehicle was included in that. So there should be, you know, 25,000. The second, the third final column there basically has, what she tried to do was project, you know, if, right now we're in a situation where our driver is now doing more than 20 hours a week, although he does not need health insurance, he would be entitled to it. So if we were to, if we were to hire another driver who would, who would qualify for health insurance, if we tried to factor that cost in, you know, looked at, that's probably what it would do to the savings. So, you know, the, the van looks, the van has been very successful, it has not been, to this point, knock on wood, there's been no headache, our driver's been great, he's kept phenomenal records, which made tracking expenses down and doing that, he's been on top of making sure everything gets, you know, we're always inspected and we have all, you know, the right oil changes and all that kind of stuff, so he's done, he's done a great job for us. But I would say that the data is showing that I think it was a wise investment, and I think that nowadays, even when you start looking at other things, including, including the cost of even things like field trips and stuff, look, you know, looking to possibly increase our, our fleet of vehicles is not a, I think that would be a wise decision as for us to include that, whether that's something that, you know, we budget in for next year, or it's something that we, we can look if we, you know, as we, as we track this year, if there seems to be the opportunity to maybe even do it this year or something like that, I think we could, we could look into that, because I think we are seeing that it pays for itself, and I think, from what I hear, our, our driver's given us some, some good credibility out there, that there's some other drivers that want to work for us, so that's good.
Have you been able to use it for, for other events besides just golf?
So right now, the, the only thing we're, yeah, so the thing, we haven't really been able to, we haven't really mastered that yet. And part of that trick comes with the, with the plates on the vehicle. So it's, it's, because it's a 7D plate, we need to have someone with a 7D license to drive it, so it's not like the golf coach can just jump in and drive kids over there, if he's, if they're transporting kids with them, yeah. So we can use it for that, we'd still have to have either one of our drivers, or at least the person doing it would have to have their 7D license. So that's the only real kind of sticking point we're looking on right now, but I think we will continue to work with them to figure it out.
So, this data is fantastic, thank you very much for that, it's very helpful to see it, and it's great to see that you're including healthcare costs, because that's important for the town as well. You know, so I, I know with us rolling out the van, we tried to be conservative, we did it with local collaboratives and things that were easy to access. But I, I would say that I strongly recommend us going forward with another van, because if you were to do what they call a long ride, now instead of estimating a $38,000 expense, you're estimating more like a $58,000 expense that a company's going to charge you, so there's a, this is conservative numbers, and it's still cost-effective and it almost pays for the van in the first year. So I would say that we really should consider trying to add at least one van a year.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right, and I think part of our being conservative, if you, if you remember, was, we don't have a backup van right now, so, so we didn't want to, you know, when we were just, you know, dipping our toe in the water, we didn't want to have vans driving all over the place, and all of a sudden now we get a flat tire or something and we don't really, but if we're starting to get two or three of them so that we do have those options, that, you know, if one van did break down, okay, we might be, we crush, you know, crunch for time a little bit, but we could get it all pulled off. Plus, we even used in the backup company, we had to use a couple times-
Yeah, we had a backup.
-that worked out okay, so.
And I think that's fantastic, you know, providing that support-
Yeah.
-because that allows us to-
Yeah. So I think it's something we can keep our eye on as we go through the year and see, because if it's one of those things that we feel that, you know, would make sense because it could pay for itself this year as we track our budget, we could potentially look at allocating funds for that, you know, because it'll, it'll, you know, it's almost, you know, we, it's not, it, even with the, even with the purchase price of 29,000, in the first year for running it only half a year, it was only a $17,000 loss. So if we're trending the right way, you know, trying to get another one, you know, even this spring or something, if we look at our budget, is not out of the realm of possibility. But if not, you know, we don't know where the budget's going to go from right now, so even if that's not the case, at least making sure we're starting to get it in the, the next budget cycle, yeah.
And I'd say that we should, you know, look at hiring, because right now the registry of motor vehicles is backed up 10 weeks for someone to get on the road, so if it's a-
For a 7D license, you mean?
Yeah. So for somebody who gets hired right now, the turnaround time is 10 weeks-
If they don't have it, yeah.
...to get them on the road, and so for, you know, looking at bringing someone new on.
And we've, we've advertised for substitute drivers a couple times, but maybe we could change that, add a little more to make it a little more enticing, that it's like, you know, maybe substitute with potential for permanent or something like that in, in the spring. But we'll get that, you know, I think, our goal is at the next school committee meeting at the end of October, to try to give a first-quarter update on, on finances for this year, so we can really get those, look at those encumbrances right now as they stand and start seeing, seeing where we're landing right now.
One I was going to want to note, but one of the questions we had when we had the first year was how the communication was going to be, and my Director of Technology had sent off an email, that was his idea, and it worked wonderfully, so the parents email, that driver has an email on his phone, and those copies goes to Kath, the copy of the email goes to Kathy and myself, and that worked out wonderfully. So a lot of the kinks that we thought might have been a big problem didn't turn out.
And it's really worked out well with those parents, because they're great, they get, I see those emails too, so they come in, you get like the, you know, the weekly schedule and they'll let you know what's going on and what days they don't need rides, and it's, it's great, so.
We left out that word.
So it's, it's been a positive experience, I think it was a savings, I think it's a direction we should keep, continue looking at, and definitely, if it's not something we can do, you know, expand this year, at least try to budget to expand next year, because I think it's the type of investment that's going to actually save in the long run. And then, you know, obviously the alternative, alternative programs, that type of stuff, we do have the alternative program, alternative classroom we're running. I think we are at five students right now, is that right? Is it five?
Five, yep.
Five, yep. And two, I know two of them are re-engaged dropouts, which I thought was good to see, students who had, you know, left either our system or were in our system, maybe technically left another system, but they've, they're trying to finish up, so I think that's, that's great. And, so, you know, overall, it seems like most of the students are responding favorably, they, they're, they're doing their work. We've had to make a couple adjustments on how the original setup was, we have one, one kid right now that comes in a little early, hangs, keeps us company for a little bit. But it's, you know, overall, it seems to be, seems to be working well, so I think that's something we'll keep some, keep some tabs on. I know we do have our, our tiered focus monitoring this year, where they, formerly the Coordinated Program Review, the state comes in and looks at your special ed programs and, and those types of things, and although this is not an exclusive special ed program right now, and we don't really intend it to be, they are going to look at, they will have some questions when they look at that in terms of the equity and access and those types of things. of the equity and access and those types of things for that. So, I think that'll be, and that'll be good for us, you know, it'll be something that they can look at and if there's certain concerns or issues they have, we can, we can address them, you know, we wanted to, to pilot it and see how it works. And, you know, certainly they understand that, you know, all motivation behind that is to try to provide students an academic setting that they can hopefully be successful in. So, so I think, I think that's another opportunity we have. And then I think, you know, as we, as was mentioned before, if we can get that, that successful, I think ultimately the goal would to make that its own school code at some point. And then that might be an opportunity to look at, you know, collaborating with other districts to see are there, are there students that they need to send and how could that program almost become maybe self-sufficient, if not slightly better than self-sufficient, so.
Great.
And, you know, I think, you know, the last one, new, new alternative sources of funding, you know, I think we're always on the, on the hunt for grants, we've been applying for those, including like getting the, the Perkins grants, so we can start pursuing more of that career technical programming. So, that's another one where the, because we, because we got our Perkins grant and our Perkins plan approved last year, and we actually coded kids as being in part of the, the students in the preschool program up here as being part of a Perkins program, now we need part of our coordinated program review this year as they will send our tiered focus monitoring, they will send someone out to look at our Perkins program. But, they know we just started and they've been, they've been good for us and it's, it's actually going to be what they're calling a, a technical assistance visit. So, essentially they're not coming out really to tell us what we're doing wrong, they know that we're just starting, they're coming out to give us help. So, so I think that's a, you know, that, that'll be, that'll be good as well as we look to try to, you know, expand that and make sure that we're providing good career opportunities for students in, you know, here in Clinton. So, that's pretty much, you know, an update on those two strategic plan items. I mean, I know they're not, you know, there's not a ton of the stuff I'm giving you right now in terms of evidence or anything for them, but I think it's just more important to make sure that we're revisiting these and we're bringing them back and keeping, you know, it's not just a document we put on a shelf, we're coming back to these. And in fact, the things that we, a lot of the things we've listed in there, we've either begun working on or will continue to work on, so. The next agenda item was the student activity account audit, and that's a big portion of what else is in here right now. There's a student activity account audit for each of the three schools. This is just a draft, I think there's a couple of things that were in this draft that we've provided some documentation on, right? Was that?
Yeah, there was a couple of things that he said that we didn't have, but I had to check with him.
Do you want to, Karen, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about the student activity account audits?
Yeah, we'll get you a microphone.
Some of the, some of the recommendations that were in the audit, the main one was that transfer the elementary school student activity funds, going to close that account, would like to get a vote by the school committee to close that account. They felt that those funds are better fit for the gift and the revolving fund and the mass, under the mass general laws. So, I did do the September 2018 bank reconciliation, but I'd like to wait just one month to give you the exact amount that we're going to transfer over to make sure that all the checks clears and everything.
What do you say, we have three outstanding checks right now?
I have a, a few outstanding and then Rob had to write one today because it wouldn't have been enough time in the warrant system to get it to him for a field trip that was coming up. So, we would like to get a vote to transfer that money out. I do have the bank record of what it is now, but just want to make sure it's the exact amount when we transfer it out. They also recommended to add the principal and the student treasurer to the fidelity bond policy. We're in the process of doing that, that was another recommendation that Masbo had made as well. So, we did send out a memo to Mike Ward with a list of employees that handle cash to be added to the bond, that fidelity. The, the audit, so every three years it's to be audited by the outside firm, which is what we just completed. That also was in the Masbo review, so we've done that. On the intervening years, it's supposed to be done by a reasonable individual, independent of the student activities. And they recommended that possibly the town accountant or the town treasurer. It could be myself, but I'm already involved with it, so I cannot do the audit if I'm already involved in the student activity. I did speak to Diane about that and she was going to talk to the auditor and get a little bit more detail before she decided if she would be the one to do it or maybe John, the treasurer. They recommended implementing annual training with the principals and the student advisor to go over the policies and procedures. We've already scheduled that, so next week, meeting with the middle school and the week after that, the high school. And then also the bank reconciliations for the student activity. We're going to make that a part of the quarterly financial report to the school committee. They thought that the school committee should get a copy of them. And also, I give them to the principals every month. They want to make sure that the principals sign off on it and also give copies to the school committee. So, we'll be doing that.
And the advisors themselves.
And the advisors for the amounts that they have in each one of their accounts. So, those were the recommendations that they had made. So, we've already started implementing the recommendations. And then we'll get the final draft. Once, I sent a couple of things to him today and then we'll get the final draft.
So, we're not closing the activity account?
The elementary school one.
So, I guess that's what I'm confused about a little bit. So, going forward, if they don't have that activity account, how will they, how will they manage, like you said today, they needed one for a field trip?
Well, they can put their field trips through the regular warrant system and the field trip money would, we're going to transfer that money into like a, either the, we had recommended either donation account or else they'll make the athletics slash activity account or something like that, has to be a revolving account. And then they feel, just put it like same warrant system, but it would come out of that fund rather than a general fund.
So, okay.
Because most of their money in the past, I think was, was money that was raised by fundraisers, like they had to spell upon. And sometimes, I can only tell you what I think happened because I wasn't here, but some of them, it sounded like they were money raised for maybe like technology and playground and stuff. And that stuff, which should be instructional and school expenses should not be in the student activity. So, that's why they felt it was better suited to be in the revolving, which I had thought all along, but I wanted to make sure that the auditors agreed with that. And Diane and I had already had discussion with them, but we were waiting for it to be audited to move that money out.
Typically for a student activity account, it really should be, it should be an activity that has like an advisor and has like officers and those types of things. So, typically, you don't really see student activity accounts in, in the elementary school level. So, because, you know, you're not really typically, you're going to handle it through more of a revolving account where, you know, if you're, if you are collecting money for a field trip or something, it'll get deposited and then we could, we'll, we can write the check to pay for whatever it is.
And the money that goes into the student activity account cannot ever be used for the school, like instructional supplies or technology for the school or playgrounds for the school. So, this money moving to the revolving would actually give more options for the elementary school to use that money.
That's kind of my concern is, is kind of what Steve said, if, on that example, if they do collect money for a, a field trip and there's money left over and it was left in account specifically for a field trip, they could use it on another field trip. But if you, but if you put it in a revolving account or athletic account, then, you know, I'm giving money thinking it's going on a field trip, but it ends up being used for something else.
Well, anything, anything that goes into a donation account that has restriction, I have it noted, I have, I have.
Because we get a lot of donations that are, that are earmarked for certain things. So, we can track that when we log it in. But, I'd say usually, there's not extra field trip money usually.
No, I understand.
Usually there are people that you are, yeah.
Even if you got a fundraiser for, for, you know, whatever, you put it toward a Washington DC trip, you see it, and I know that's not an elementary, I'm not going to bad example, I guess, but.
No, if it's restricted, we mark it as restricted. Because, I mean, we've got donations that are as detailed as I want us for student agendas. So, it has to be used for student agendas. So, I, I keep track of that so that we make sure it's used. And this money will be earmarked for elementary school only, so.
And we'll have to just make sure that, you know, we will have to, we will have to work with the town and just make sure we streamline the revolving account and exactly that process. Because it will be a little bit of a change in terms of, you know, we're going to have to, and most field trips don't happen, you know, there's, there's some notice here, right? So, we're going to have to sort of, you know, work with, work with the company to, you know, if they're going to go to an apple orchard and they're charging five bucks a kid, well, we can kind of put in that we're going to have to get a check for them for the day of the field trip in advance. And then we can, we can, as they collect the money from the kids and then we can, we can, we'll deposit that and give them the check. So, we just, we'll just have to plan a little bit more in advance, which is, which is okay.
So, there's still a student activity account at the middle school and high school?
Yep.
Yes. Because that money's more, that's usually what it is, it's more, it's money raised by students to be used for students.
Sure, okay.
So, it's more that.
And do each school have their own separate revolving account or is there just one revolving account that all the, the schools utilize?
For the donations?
Yeah.
No, there's not. So, if it's anything donated, I have to keep track of what's restricted for a particular school or if it's restricted for a particular purpose. But, all there's only one.
So, there's one for all the, all the schools, okay. And this, what was in the elementary school student activity account, we're proposing that, that just now go into that district line revolving for the elementary school.
Intermarked for the elementary school.
Okay, all right.
And we're going to have more discussion with the town on whether we're going to make it, put it into the donation or maybe set up another revolving, like.
So, there are, there are definitely some restrictions, you know, as a school district, you can't just start opening revolving accounts for everything. There are some restrictions on what they can and can't be for. So, we just need to, just make sure we're looking at the best, the best avenue for that. Some, some places they recommend a lot of times that what we always refer to as athletics revolving, a lot of times that might be referred to as athletics and activities revolving and encompass a little more, even though still athletics is going to be your largest part of it. You can, just like we track everything, you know, just because there's one bank account, you know, even like our, even a regular high school student activity account, there might be one checking account that they're writing from, but, but we have to keep a ledger that shows for all the, you know, 15 different clubs that are approved in there, what their balance is. So, we could do a similar thing with the athletic revolving, if we needed to do that, make it more of an activities and athletic revolving. Or, we can see if there's another approved revolving account that they would want us to, allow us to open.
Set up, right. Because there, when I spoke to the auditor, he had recommended more that athletics slash activities, but we just want to make sure that that's what we want to tell.
Yep.
As of right now, there's $34,681 in that account. So, this is a substantial amount of money that's being moved over.
Anyone have to make a motion to that effect to close the existing student activity account per purpose and based on the recommendations of Masbo or the independent?
No, the auditor does bill for.
So, you can make that motion now if you want, or you can wait until we give you an exact amount. Yeah, just because I know we have, we have two outstanding checks and we have one check that was just recently written for our trip, I think happening next week or something like that, that we weren't going to be able to get through the warrant. So, so if we want, if you're okay with it, we can delay that till we get an exact amount.
So, one of the recommendations from this audit was that we get, we repeat the audit from an outside CPA or some other outside source once every three years?
Every three years, which we knew that. And then the, on the intervening years, they, I, it could be me if I was not doing it. So, now, he said that it could be the town accountant, it could be the town treasurer. But, if neither one of them will do it, then we'll have to find somebody else to do it. I know Masbo does do that, but I prefer to have it done by, you know, somebody in.
So, every three years, we have to have it done like a, a real audit by an auditing, you know, an auditing firm CPA. But, they're saying is, you know, in between those audits, you should still have like an internal type of check and balance.
Right.
So, right now, you know, Karen Ax is our, our student activity account manager, essentially treasurer, but she's also the business manager. If we were like a larger district, sometimes the, the business manager could do that internally with the, with the treasurer or if our treasurer was someone else. So, because she's involved in it for the check and balance purposes, we would be going, we'd be looking up at, okay, is it can be the, it could be the town accountant or it could be the town treasurer. Yeah, so, so we'll figure that out. Or, it could be an independent firm that we get, you know, all the time. If we, maybe if the same firm knows that, you know, maybe they'll cut us a deal to do two, you know, two small annual ones because they're going to, and then they're going to do the third big one or something like that, so.
I know some of the business managers had also, when we talked about it at one of the meetings, that possibly one might, like I might do theirs and they might do mine.
Yeah.
There's that kind of thing that can go on. Because they are kind of costly to do them.
But, I was, I was curious if you had an idea how expensive each one of these audits is.
This one was $6,500.
Okay.
And it, it, it can be paid for the student activity, because the student activity fund has interest that, you know, they.
This audit was more of like a review of our procedures and everything, right?
No, that's the three-year, that's how much the three-year would be.
So, this is, okay, this is what we, okay, thank you.
It would be about the same for the, if, on the next three years. They're kind of costly, so if we have to pay 65 each year, that would be kind of a big hit for a student activity. It is paid out of the interest that has been collected through the years, you're allowed to, we have that in the, you know, policies and procedures. So, it won't, it's not going to be coming out of the general fund, it comes out of there, but still it's kind of a big hit if you have to have that.
Yeah, and it won't, it won't sustain that very long if you're doing it every year. But, in three years, we can, yeah.
So, I'm hoping that we can find some way to do it on, you know, the years.
Okay. And just last question, is that every three years, is that illegal, is that legally or is that, that's just the recommendation of the, of, of this review?
I think it's the Department of Ed as well.
Okay, all right.
It's pretty much everybody, yeah. It's part of, when we, when we did the policies and procedures and I was doing all the investigation, that is what the Department of Ed recommends, so.
Okay.
It's pretty much, everybody has to do that every three years.
Mike has something. Mike?
So, in the recommendations comments, I see that there's mention of certain policies that we don't have in place right now. Are you going to be able to, or Dr. Meyer, share with the policy committee's samples of, because like the travel policy was mentioned throughout the report. So, is there a sample travel policy that can be presented?
Yeah, we'll make sure we get whatever it is from, like, we'll go to the, we'll get the sample MASC ones and we'll try to work on that.
Well, that was one of the things that I, that I sent over to him. Because we have all those travel policies that have already been approved by you guys for the school district.
But, it looks like there was some problems with it.
No, because they weren't in our policies and procedures for the student activity, the particular procedures. So, I sent them over to ask him if, if we have them that have been voted on for the district, can that be incorporated into the student activity as well? Because we do have them for the school district.
They, they just weren't in the actual student activities handbook.
Right, in the handbook. So, I sent them over, that was some of the things that I said it may change. So, that was some of the things that I sent to him today and I got from Mary copies of all those. Also.
Clarification on that, because as I read it, it looks like our policy didn't hold up to.
Right.
To that, so if that was.
So, we sent him additional information when we get his feedback on that, but definitely if he still says those need to be updated or recommend, we'll get the, we'll get the model ones and we'll get them.
Yeah, there was a couple of things that I did send to him today. Because it's another thing, the principals signing off and they had signed off, so I sent those copies to him today. So, that will be wiped off the, the final draft. But, all the advisors do sign off on getting the policies and procedures, but you, if the recommendation is to have that actual meeting to sit down with them all, which we're going to start doing, which I think is a good idea to do that, so.
And then, I know that we have a lot of volunteers, so in your training, you'll have time to work with those individuals as well?
We're going to have all the advisors come. Do you mean other than the advisors? We're going to be having the, the principals, the advisors and also the student officers come. So, because the student offices as well, because we want them to know what their class monies and what they have to do. Because, you know, your daughter was one that came and discussed it with me. So, we want to have that at that meeting, that this is what you should do when you first start with, you know, as a freshman and then what you do when you're a senior, when you're leaving. So, we'll be going over that with all of them.
And, and that will have implications for us in terms of policy, correct?
Well, the procedures you've already voted on, so all those forms and stuff are already in there for the student activities, with the exception of the travel policy, which if we need to update that or improve on that, and he's not going to allow us to use required travel policy. travel policy, then we'll have to include that into that, we'll have to change the policies and procedures and include that.
Any other questions? Alright.
Okay, the other, the food service, did you wanna go over that now, or not?
Um, you just wanted to provide the update of the, uh.
Uh, Mike had, had some questions on the food service. I spoke to Nan about the breakdown on the lunch accounts, past accounts, so, um, this is, the figure that she gave me is, we started two years ago at about thirty thousand dollars owed, in March of two thousand seventeen, it went down to seventeen thousand, eight hundred, and by the end of the last school year, um, it was at thirteen, four sixty, and now it's at twelve, four eighty-six. So, it is improving.
I would imagine the automated system that we're using is helping a great deal.
Right. And then, the other thing that we had asked about was the, um, community eligibility provision and the percentages. On, in FY seventeen, uh, we were at forty-one point five two for the elementary, forty-three point two six for the middle, forty-two point six six at the high school, and it wasn't advantageous at that time, not even all schools qualified. And then for FY eighteen, um, the percentages were lower. It was thirty-seven point oh nine for the elementary, thirty-nine point three three for the middle, and thirty-five point four eight at the high school. And you have to be at least forty percent to even be considered.
Forty percent to consider it, but for it to actually.
So, you're missing the cutoff point this past year.
And it's not even really a thing.
Our current, um, our current direct certification number misses the cutoff point of forty percent, I think.
And what are they basing that eligibility off? What report is that?
So, it can be, it's a variety of reports, um, but if your family, um, there's different things that could get you on that list. Different programs, it could be you receive, um, fuel assistance from the state, it could be you receive SNAP benefits, or something like that. Any of those different types of, um, government programs. If you're getting a, a direct, um, supplemental, you know, financial assistance program through the state, you're in the system, they automatically say you're eligible for, for free and reduced lunch. There's other things we can look at, as far as, um, you know, if someone's classified as homeless, or those types of things, we can claim them in there. So, but those are, you know, those are, uh, numbers that are, that are linked to other databases in the state, based on who's receiving other, uh, assistance. That's the number that they go by for this program, is the direct certification number. So, it's, it's not the, the paper forms that we used to fill out and do the verification, that, 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 those don't apply for the, um, for the community eligibility provision.
So, the numbers that you just said, so this year, we're lower than we have then?
Yeah.
So, are we attributing that to the fact that some parents aren't filling out the forms, or that we actually think we have a?
Well, that's right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be with the forms, but it might be that if you have, so this is always the tricky thing, right? So, if you have families that might, they might qualify, um, but if they're not reaching out to get assistance through any of those other government programs, um, then they're not being captured through the direct certification. So, the paper forms that they fill out, you know, they, they still might do that, like, I don't know exactly what our free and reduced percentage is off the top of my head this year, but I know it's more than thirty-nine percent, because we have an additional subset of population that fills out the forms and says, this is our household income, we qualify. But if that family isn't actually receiving one of these other kind of state benefits, or at least, you know, in that system somewhere, they don't show up on that direct certification. So, uh, you know, so that is a, that is a challenge, that was a challenge we faced when I was in Athol as well, is how do we kind of get those people to, to try to take advantage of the, uh, things that they probably qualify for, and they might not even know.
Well, I know in years past, I know, um, the food service had to promote, uh, people filling out the forms. I think they held like computer raffles.
Computer, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, where, where they were trying to promote, because I know we did the raffles here a couple times at the meetings.
But they do it by direct certification now, so what they recommend is to, for you to, to run your direct certs more often, which Nan indicated that she's trying to do that, to capture as much as we can. But, um, just to give you an idea, like, in FY seventeen, we were above the forty percent, but yet, we did it, I brought the analysis, when we did the analysis, and it, it would have cost us money. Because until you get, I think it might have been about sixty percent, it's not even advantageous. Because you have to look at, you know, how much money you're getting coming in, how much they're gonna give you for this free program, and it doesn't always work for you, even when you do qualify. So, when you, the first step would be to qualify, and then the second step is to do an analysis to see if it's worth it to do it. And at this time, it was not worth it to do it. And then, we had thought that it was, you know, the next year, um, it would probably increase, but it didn't. It decreased. I don't know the exact reason.
The families that, that, um, that are eligible for the reduced lunch or the free lunch, do they sense something, you made a good point, I think a lot of those programs are available, people just don't know about it. So, do they, to them, the families that are eligible for the reduced, does anything sent home to them with a kind of a list of the, like, fuel assistance to me is one that somehow doesn't get out? And I'm not just talking with students, I deal with the veterans, and it's the same issue, that just they don't know to apply for it till it's too late, you know? And, you know, do they send anything home at the beginning of the year?
I'm not sure.
Just kind of, and I don't wanna create work for Van, but.
I can check with Nan, with Nan, too.
Well, no, but if we, you know, if we were able to provide some of that information to people when they, especially when, if they're returning those forms to qualify, making sure we're saying, well, if you, you know, if you feel qualified for this, you probably qualify for these, yeah, and help guide them, yep.
And that's kind of where I was gonna go. So, I, I know like with Medicaid and this, they're kind of the same, you know, concerns and needs, where we wanna protect confidentiality, so I don't know if there's ways out there that other districts are doing it, that they're having success in honoring people's confidentiality, because it's a sensitive area. But I feel like with Medicaid, and with this stuff, there's things that maybe the district and families are leaving things on the table
Yeah.
that they could be utilizing.
Yeah.
Because I feel like, when we look at the poverty rate of people that are citizens in town, we're there.
Yeah.
But then, when it looks at the numbers that we're reporting out, with the data we can only use, the, the numbers, there's a big discrepancy.
Yeah, I agree, I would think there is, but I think it's kind of a difficulty.
It is, because of confidentiality, respect of people's, you know, and some people are proud, but if there's a way that we can take advantage of other people, not recreate the wheel,
Yep.
Medicaid being one of those things too, because I know, you know, it's hard for families to sometimes turn that back into us. But everybody that fills out that form, that's more money coming back to the town.
Yep.
I know Nan and I went to the community eligibility training, and I'd like to continue to do that, because when we do go, even if we don't qualify, you do get, you know, that, sometimes you get some ideas from those trainings, so I'll recommend that Nan and I go again.
It might be something we should probably look into, as far as exactly what programs qualify for that, um, maybe get some information on how to refer families to that, especially, like you said, like heating assistance. I mean, now, we're coming up in the winter, it's a great time to start getting that information out to people. And then, you know, if people, you know, maybe we can even do something to get some sort of agency in here, and have a night that people could come in and get help applying for those things if they needed to, so.
I think the head style program too, right?
Yeah, there's different, yeah, there's different, uh, there's a list of them that I don't, I don't know a lot of them.
I'll check with Nan, I don't wanna answer that, but I will check with her. Nan and I, um, have been doing a lot of reports this year with food service, so, um, that was one of the things that Maspo had recommended, so, um, we have been working on different.
And our food service is, is kind of on our scheduled audits, food service is doing an audit this year.
And we did cover, um, that there was a small deficit in the, um, school lunch program, and so we did cover that this year. It, it wasn't very large, but it was.
And that's per, per statute, so.
Per statute, right.
Anything else for Karen?
Not very, very forward, thank you.
Thank you.
So, just a couple more updates here, just some follow-up on some things. The SRO MOU, I know I gave it to you last time, um, our last meeting, which now seems like it was forever ago, having the three-week layover. We do have Officer Sylvester now, is, um, working the, the Monday to Friday shift. I've seen him at, you know, all the buildings, we pass each other a lot during the day as we, as we go make our rounds. Uh, I think we've got him pretty much all set up with, um, office space, I know he's got, uh, office space up here, and, uh, you know, school, school phone extension, school email, access to iPass, all those types of things. I know that they do, they do have the standard operating procedures that they've worked out at the police station. I know that, I think, I talked to Mike Ward, we're just, they're running some of that stuff by the selectmen, just to make sure that, uh, selectmen were okay with everything on that end, as far as the MOU. And then, uh, we should be able to get a final draft here to get it all signed off, hopefully. In fact, I think, I think I'm, I might be the only one that has to sign off on that the way it was drawn up by the state, so I'll sign, but just trying to cover all our bases and make sure everyone's been included. So, I know I talked to Mike, and he was also talking to the selectmen about it too, just because, you know, we wanna make sure we're not, there's not some, you know, uh, MOU done between two department heads that's gonna end up saying that we promised to, you know, hire three new officers every year, or something like that, you know, just going through the checks and balances like everything, so.
So, this, uh, the resource officer is between both schools, right?
He goes, he goes to all three schools, yeah.
All three schools, okay. I was just, who, do the, the principals work that out with him on the times he spends at each, or is he kind of free to just like, kind of roam to whatever school he, you know?
Right now, he's been kind of free to roam.
Okay.
I think he's, I would say, you know, just from what I've seen, this is more or less his home base.
Okay.
And then, because this is where, you know, most, more, more things are likely to happen at this school.
Sure.
And then goes to the elementary school when it's.
What'd you say?
Yeah. Just due to the age, that's it. And then he goes to the, uh, you know, goes to the middle school as needed, and goes and checks on, you know, walks around there, and then goes to the, uh, elementary school as well. And we've talked about some different things in terms of how to maybe start, um, you know, integrating them in, you know, things like the, you know, kindergarten, we'll have a unit on community helpers and stuff, like, how can you get him involved in that at a young age, so that they're, they have a nice chance to meet with them and get in his classrooms and that kind of stuff? So, so we're, you know, we'll continue to formalize it. I think right now, it's still a little more, you know, kinda.
It's early.
Yeah, just kind of, just kind of patrolling the schools right now, but we'll get it a little more formalized as we go. The buses, I did include a copy of our, uh, the bus contract in here, which is, it's a, it's a very short contract, um, but this does have, uh, I know we talked a little bit about the, you know, some of the low ridership on the high school buses, and, and it's a, you know, you could just see the way it was, the way it was bid last time, was basically bid on kind of that per-day route. So, the cost sheets, you can see they're kind of broken down that way. We do have an, uh, an extension year, um, our last extension year would be this year. Last year, the extend, uh, this year, we're currently in was the first extension year. It was a very modest increase from the year before, I wanna say it was like a percent or two percent from the year before. With everything else we're doing last year, we just voted to approve the extension. I know the extension for next year is a little more of an increase, I can't, I don't remember off the top of my head, it was like five or six percent, I believe. And, so I, I did, I have talked to the bus company about, you know, looking at some of the, sitting down to look at some of the, uh, the different options that we might be able to run, including, you know, does it make sense to do one high school, middle school run together, or something like that? Financially, how could we work that out? And I think there's other things in their bus contract that we're gonna wanna, wanna update. I mean, I did go back through our bid specs, and, because it does say in the, in the contract, they agreed to go with the bid specs, and I, and I was reading through that, um, there are, there's definitely some language in the bid specs that I feel, um, we, isn't necessarily being followed, and I don't think it's anything malicious, it's just sort of one of those things that kind of, they're not major deals, but they're things that just kind of, I think, you know, fell by the wayside. So, I think that's something worth revisiting, is our, is our bid specs, and trying to look at, um, if we wanna go out to bid, you know, how do we want to bid that? And I'd say that the, um, you know, looking at that. So, we have until, you know, pretty late in the year to, to pick up that extension, so it might be something that if we wanna work on, at least trying to, I would mean with the bus company, to look over some of their suggestion options, but we can see if we wanna go out to bid this, this fall or winter. Questions?
So, you know, looking at the contract, it looks like a fairly small contract, so I would imagine, there's a lot of specs that we might wanna add
Yeah.
if we were to go out to bid. And, you know, what I see is that if we go out to bid, and we don't hit what we're hoping for, we can go with another extension, and make that decision by nature to get.
Yeah.
So, and really, there's no negative impact for us to see what's out there, for us to see if we can get a more lucrative option.
Yep.
How many vendors are there for this area? Are there really that many?
See, that, you know, that's, that's the million dollar question all the time, right? How, who, who's actually gonna, who's actually gonna bid it? But I do think that it's, it, that's why I think it's still worth working with D throughout the process, as we look at it too, because the way, even when I read the bid specs, the way the bid specs were written, it's almost like they were asking you to bid the job this way, right? Like a daily rate per buses, and eight buses here, it's gonna run all, and, and what I don't know is, did they bid it that way, because that's how they were asked to bid it? Or is that the way that they would, how would they normally bid a job? Because I've, I've normally seen, um, more of like a price per run. Like, you know, your tier one, the first time I've gotta get a bus out, this is how much it costs me for that run. My tier two, the second time that same bus gets to go again, it's a little cheaper, that kind of stuff. So, you know, we can look at that a little bit, I just think, you know, I think it's worth just refreshing it, you know, I don't know, but I don't know. I don't know who does, uh, you know, I don't know who does Toledo's transportation, I don't know, you know, if there's anyone around that would be, that would actually bid it or not.
I mean, it's a valid point that Joel's bringing up, there, there might not be a lot of other companies out there, but this is an opportunity for us to get a feeler before we're forced to go with something.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we don't, I'm just saying that, you know, the reality of it is, we may not have as much leverage as we'd hope, because there, there just may not be that much interest.
There's probably not a lot of options out there.
But, if there's any way that maybe by bidding it a slightly different way, and if we work with D, if we can try to bid it maybe in a more efficient manner, um, something like that, or, or at least include maybe some other things, whether it's, uh, you know, some of the rates we pay for, you know, field trips and things are kind of high, I believe, there might be some things that we can, you know, we could at least come to the table and say, listen, can you work with us on some of these things too? So, um, so we can, you know, I think, you know, I think it's just worth us getting the ball rolling on that.
Is the late bus included in this contract that we have, or is the late bus kind of just a year-to-year extra thing?
Late bus is just kind of a year-to-year thing that we kind of finagle and get a quote and figure it out, yeah. Opioid forum, just a reminder, there is opioid forum here, October twenty-fourth, um, at six PM. You know, it's being put on by Harold Naughton's office, I know I'll be, I think I'm some part of it, right? Yeah, I'm part of it, so, I'll be there.
So, we should try and, and, uh, be there if we can. I won't be able to be there when it starts, but, um, I will try and get there.
Okay. Non-teaching personnel, so the non-teaching personnel is the contract that is, um, scheduled to be, uh, scheduled to expire on June thirtieth. So, that is, that consists of, by non-teaching personnel in this district, what that consists of is basically our custodians, groundskeeper, and administrative assistants, or secretaries, and clerks, I think is the other term they use. So, that's that, that personnel group. Once again, I talked to Mike Ward about that, because we are having some discussion because we are having some discussion with the town council about the strategy for, basically, not the strategy really, but the, the direction that we need to go in bargaining with these, with the groups. Because if the, if the goal is to try to ultimately move all the custodial facilities people under one bargaining unit, that's something that we need to consider when we're doing any negotiations with, with this group. So I'll continue to work with Mike and try to figure out some direction. I think like with most things, it's a small, you know, it's a, it'll be a long process. And I don't know when any other contracts that might be impacted might, might be expiring. So it might be a situation where we might have to, you know.
Year-to-year.
Right, we might end up just going to the table saying we want to do a one-year or a two-year contract or something. Because our goal is to at least time it up so that there's a more long-term plan that goes in place after that. So, but, you know, we, our first step will be to just kind of, you know, figure that out and go from there. I did go to the Chamber of Commerce manufacturing tour. It took place, I participated in that last week. And it was, I think there were, there was at least five of us that were superintendents or charter school directors on that tour. And we went to, started in Pittsburgh. We went to three different manufacturing sites in this area that kind of ranged in, in, you know, one was furniture, one was high-end musical instruments, and one was basically medical devices. And, and then we ended at Mount Wachusett at their Devens campus, looking at their automatronics program there. So it was really a good opportunity to see firsthand sort of some of those jobs that are available, that are relatively, you know, good-paying jobs that have opportunities for advancement, that don't necessarily require a, you know, a college degree or it might be something you can get started in at a relatively good wage. And as you take more specialized courses, you can move up within that, within that company. So it was just a, you know, it was a great opportunity to, to get out and see that and really have that discussion at the end with Mount Wachusett about kind of what they're trying to do and how we as superintendents can kind of rethink some of these things. And I think it's, it's just one more piece of the puzzle, I think, that goes into when we have the discussions about like the makerspace and the fire station and, and what kind of projects could make, what kind of those classes could we bring there? And like the Night Bro Institute, those type of things. Like what can we, what can we kind of, what kind of like synergy can we get with all those to try to make sure that there's opportunities here for kids? Because a lot of what we talked about with some of these courses that students can take at Quinn Sig as a community college course, you know, after high school. But I, I think a lot of those stuff, we could, we could get these kids exposed to it in high school and actually make it so when they're graduating, you know, they, they know what they're getting into and they know they might have a plan, so. The last one's just French River Education Collaborative. I went to, French River had a meeting last week. It was another opportunity to, you kind of network with some of the superintendents and the director in that group. And there's a couple of things at French River, being a member, they actually say, it's almost like being a member of French River, you almost get, basically get back more in the membership than, than you pay to be a member. And one of them is Teach Point, which we've been using. Our subscription to Teach Point is through French River. So that's what we use for our educator evaluation system. Another one is One Call Now. And we've been looking at, we're slowly kind of looking to transition to the One Call Now system instead of the Connect Ed system. So basically, One Call Now is the same thing. It's a, you know, automated phone calls, emails, all the same stuff that we can do with Connect Ed. The only difference is we get it for free with the French River membership. So we're looking at transitioning into that system right now. We're doing it kind of slow because we want to get that up and running. We don't want to be caught where, you know, we don't have one of those systems. And the day we don't will be the day it snows, right? So, so we're working on that. And then obviously, there, that's also where we can do collaborative purchasing. So the, the purchasing co-op, so. So that was just a good one. But I figured I'd update you on that and let you know that we are moving more in that one-call direction as more of a, you know, when we actually transition and when we, when we drop the blackboard, I don't know when that'll happen necessarily. But as we plan for next year, I know that we won't need to budget for blackboard because we would have the One Call Now in there for free as part of our French River. I think that's all I have for updates for you.
Do we have anything from the marketing subcommittee?
Yeah, we did, we met on October 4th. And so we talked about, I'd say mainly three things. First was Steve brought up the, the district environment committee. And we discussed it, how this little bit of overlap with our initiatives. And, and we agreed for, Steve kind of made a list of different members he thought would be, make sense for a good board. You know, like superintendent, reps from the school committee, PTA representatives, high school parent, high school student, you know. So we kind of okayed, Steve's going to reach out to the community and to those members to see what we can get for feedback for, for a, for like a, for a committee for that district environment initiative. We then shift to digital media group, two, you know, two things we talked about. One, trying to develop a yearly schedule for the events. Because there's so many, so many people want to use the resources that in the digital media group, thought it might make sense to start scheduling these things out on a yearly basis and kind of have a plan for resource allocation and scheduling. And to that end, we also discussed, it's, it's come up before. I think this year we may have a job description for it though, about the, the role of a digital media logistics assistant that would really just help out with the scheduling, planning, and resource allocation. And another thing that role would do would be to act as a liaison between the schools and the town. Because a lot of the content that we create, we'd like to see it to get up on to the, the public access cable channel. And it's, I think it would, it would help the situation if we had a dedicated assistant role that would, you know, that would be there, one of their major job descriptions, just to kind of alleviate the, all the different roles, all the different hats that Paul kind of has to wear running that, running that group. So, you know, we think if we can get that, if we can get that role squared away, that, that should streamline that, that whole process a little bit. Because that's part of the, part of the cooperation that we do with the town. And, you know, especially with the, the cable commission, they've been, they have purchased, it's town property, but they let us, they let some of the equipment reside up here that the students use and the editing equipment. And part of the feedback for that is for us to, to keep giving that channel a steady supply of content. So this role could, this assistant role could, could help out in that. And I think that was about it. Steven, do you think of anything?
No, I think that's good. And just, you know, the, that school environment committee list, we'd probably be seeing in the near future that I'll be starting to get some information out, asking for people who are interested to volunteer on that.
Was, were facilities able to meet on the 10th?
Joel, can I just jump in on that?
Oh, sure.
Just to piggyback on what Eddie was just talking about, the whole idea of marketing and selling, you know, the school. We do, we're always thinking, we're losing choice today. One of our plans is we've been doing it with the high school anyways for the past year. This Friday, we're going to sell Clinton High School to the elementary school. We're going to bus the band down in their uniforms, this is beginning of homecoming. We're going to bus the football players in their jerseys and the cheerleaders in their uniforms. And they're going to spend the lunches in the cafeteria with the elementary school kids. The band will be playing in their uniforms. And the football players in their jerseys will be mingling with the, with the kids. And the cheerleaders will be mingling with the kids. We'll bring them back up here for a sports route. Nothing, we're not going to bring the elementary kid back. Start kids back. But I think it's, just want to bring it. If it's right with what Ed's talking about.
Yep.
What we've been trying to do is to sell the school. And why not start with the little ones? And I've talked to the staff a couple of times about doing other activities like that together, whether it be the robotics, whether it be our actors in the play to go over to the middle school or what have you. But that's the first.
That's great. Let's fill up the bleachers on Saturday with lots of kids from Clinton.
Yeah.
Because they're now aware of the game. Because heroes have come and told them about it.
It'd be nice, you know, those kids will look up to them.
Yeah, that's great.
So I just wanted to follow, that was a good time.
And when it works, when it's successful and we fill up the stands, we, we do that for the Thanksgiving Day game too. Which will be exciting.
So yes, facilities did meet on October 10th. Yeah, I don't know if, what do you guys want to update us or?
Sure. So we met on October 10th. We had a lot of stakeholders that were at the meeting with the architecture firm that we selected, which was DRA. And we had a nice, a little over an hour-long meeting talking about.
The fire station.
For the fire station, a lot of what our hopes and wishes were. One of the really positive things that came about was that we talked about making sure that we got the community involved. So we're talking on November 12th, having three separate sessions. In the morning, we're looking to have the businesses come out, share with us what kind of makerspaces, what kind of options are out there, what are the needs as far as lucrative ways of making money and as far as opportunities out there. And then to have a lunch and a dinner event, inviting people from the community so they're, they're weighing in. And then have all that data compiled by the firm so that when we have our feasibility study, that we hopefully have had all of our stakeholders weigh in so that what we're looking for for future space will be from the school system to the community. Did I miss anything?
No, that's great. And I just wanted to make sure we, you know, you hit right on it with the community forums that we want to start getting the word out on that pretty soon. And the, we chose the, the Monday, the 12th, that's the day. It's the observance, or it's when the school department observes Veterans Day. So there is no, there are no classes that day, which is, the reason we chose that purposely was so that we can have meetings using the elementary cafeteria, inviting people down there for this session. So we'll have those community forums at the elementary school. Hopefully, that'll allow us an opportunity to walk people through maybe the first floor of the fire station if they would like to see that space.
Great, thank you. Safety committee meets this Wednesday at 3:00. Curriculum and instruction meet on the 24th, as does policy. Those dates work for the subcommittee members, I'm assuming?
Where's your meeting?
Okay. All right. Under old business, we have, please extend our thanks to Russ for this detailed prepared priority schedule. Were there any questions on that?
I talked to Steve already. I told Russ today, I didn't know if Russ was covering it. I'm not that he was scheduled to come, but I did tell him that this was exactly what, you know, kind of what I wanted, what I had mentioned in the beginning. I don't know if it'd be something that Steve could bring up with him, but I know Q uses it here at the high school. I just encourage them to, you know, I see like the projects like this, you know, fall and spring cleanup when they're going to get all the shrubbing and all that stuff or the painting, is to work through the Worcester House, you know, because it's free labor. And, you know, they do, they seem like do a phenomenal job. And if, you know, I mean, just for him, I think he should do it with the town. I know they did the, see the last year, the year before, before Memorial Day, they went around and cleaned up all the graffiti on the parade route, like painted over on, under all the bridges, you know, like by woodlawn and stuff. They cleaned all that up. So they'll do other stuff and they do a good job. So if it can save us a couple bucks.
Yep.
You know, I mean, all you have to pay for is the supplies and feed them lunch. So if you can, you can do that. But yeah, this is, this is great if he could just, you know, keep, keep you posted or, and now the principals can see, you know, kind of what, you know, what's getting done and the priority. But yeah, I think it's great.
Anything else on that? Anything else under old business?
I'd just like to, Dr. Meyer, on your Chamber of Commerce manufacturing tour. I just think you failed to bring up like one of the coolest parts of your, your visit there. You get, you get to see my place of work.
Yeah, I did. I didn't know if you wanted me to bring that up or not. I did text, I did text Eddie at one point. I'm like, don't you work here or something like that? And it was like, I'm in some conference room with the window. He's like, he's like, come to the window and look down.
And I gave him a wave. And there, there actually was a nice write-up on that too, on the telegram.
Yeah.
That's all.
Just mugging your old company.
Listen, it takes a while. Anything under new business? Yes, Mr. Sam?
Eight-year-old chorus festival at Clinton Middle School is November 2nd. I don't know if we meet, or, sorry, November 2nd. So we're starting to advertise that, Saturday, November 2nd.
Every, what, and I, what the, is the veterans in the classroom, do you remember?
Veterans, November 2nd.
2nd, okay. Because she sent me something and I forgot to get back with her. And she reminded me, I got it.
So we do have veterans in the classroom again this year. Laura Taylor is spearheading that on Friday, November 2nd. And we are looking for donations this year to sponsor two women who are stationed in Afghanistan, I believe. So the students will be bringing home a flyer. It went out on a Connect Ed message on Sunday evening.